Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council's special meeting. For Tuesday, November twenty eighth, in compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format. With in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing. Call this meeting to order, and let's just go around the room and introduce ourselves, and I'll make sure and get online. Well, actually, let's start with Mr. Orthman online. You're on mute, sir.
Thank you so much. My name is Mark Orthman. I'm the city attorney for the city of Covington. And I would like to thank council and the rest of staff for letting me be virtual here today. My entire family came down with COVID after Thanksgiving holiday, so. I thought I would spare you my germs and could be here virtually tonight.
We appreciate you for doing that.
I just don't want to eat the bird where you got it from.
Good call.
Thanks, Mark, and we'll go to Beth.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Justin Momo, City Council.
Debbie Hartsock, City Council.
Jennifer Harja-Helson, City Council.
Sean Smith on the council.
Jeff Wagner, Mayor.
Adam Eastbrook, Police Chief.
Brian Byconan, Code Compliance Manager.
Selena Lyons, Community Development Director.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk.
Great. Thank you all. With that, we have. We're here to discuss code compliance, and I'll turn it over to Selena or Brian.
Turn it over to me. I'll bring this up here really quick. Um, I just want, is that shared yet? It's loading. There we are. Okay. Where's my? Um, thank you, council. Um, tonight, we are going to have a study session to talk about code compliance. This is something that has been top of mind, and. I think it's been a long time since we've come and just even told you about the program and what that division of the city does. So tonight, we're going to run through a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to stick to my notes because I can get verbose. Um, and I've got, um, obviously, the chief and Brian and Mark are here as well. Um, just if there's any kind of questions that we want to talk about or dive into deeper. Um, I would say that Mark, Brian, and our chief work primarily in this arena, and so they come with a wealth of knowledge and examples. So tonight, we're just going to talk about kind of what is code compliance. Um, we're going to spend a little time talking about nuisances. Um, priority levels, statistics, um, complaint type and investigations, more code compliance processes. And then we've got an example, and then there's some questions and discussion at the end that we'd like to engage the council in. Um, what you have before you are actually like three of the slides out of the presentation. I put them in a packet form for you because. It's informative and and also you won't probably be able to see the the diagram on the PowerPoint very well. So I'll go ahead and get us started. So what is code compliance? So authority for code compliance is really in in state law. So state law says that cities can have a code compliance division, and you're allowed to go out and enforce things within your police powers within your city. Um, it's important to know that that is an article in our state constitution. Um, it got there via a court case. And ultimately, that court case said, well, in order to do that, you also have to define nuisance. So what is a nuisance? What is it that you're enforcing? Um, and so basically, the state law comes out and says that a nuisance is the authority to declare a bait, impose fines, or a special assessment. And then within that, cities can create their own code. So Covington's a code city. And so we have a definition for that as well, and that authority is delegated to the Community Development Department. Um, some cities, you see them in executive departments. Sometimes they're their own. Full-blown department and but here in Covington, it's under um, community development. Um, one of the things that I want to just kind of point out in general, there's two things, actually. Um, we're used to seeing the word code enforcement. Um, that's something that's very much, you know, a term that's used. Um, as we're moving kind of forward and progressing as cities, most cities are turning to the term code compliance. Because that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to gain compliance before we have to move into enforcement. And and really, that's our goal. That is the end goal here. The goal is highlighted is to gain voluntary compliance first, and then use enforcement measures. When needed to gain compliance with the code. And so how do we do that, right? So a few ways that we do that are in those little boxes there. So through education and awareness. So oftentimes, folks don't even know. That there is a violation or that a code exists, right? So a lot of what this uh, Brian does in his work is, you know, when these things come up, it's, hey, did you know? And here's what we need to do to rectify that. Um, that kind of rolls into cooperation and collaboration. So. Oftentimes, you know, we think, well, they should just do this, and we should maybe have a hard hammer about that. What really we want to do is go towards voluntary compliance, right? And so you kind of, it's kind of getting, you know, the bee and honey scenario and allowing um. Allowing the code compliance officer to work with that property owner, understand their scenario, and come up with solutions that can drive towards compliance. And we've got lots of examples of. Maybe where we need um, to really use that um, to benefit us to that compliance. And then the other one is resource and problem solving efficiency. So by going in and working towards voluntary compliance, we often work with each individual. Um, person that has a violation or that's come through to the city and really work with them to understand their circumstance and then try to find a path forward for them. Um, sometimes that could be getting them other resources. Sometimes that could just be working with them on the timeline by which they have to respond. To the compliance issue, um, always driving towards voluntary correction. So here is um, our definition of nuisance. So this is just directly out of our code. Um, I don't want to read it verbatim. You you can follow along with a couple of things I want to just point out is that. Our definition emphasizes that the add the unlawfulness or acts or conditions that have negative impact on the community, right? So that's what we're really thinking about in a nuisance. And the focus extends to the actions that compromise residents' well-being, comfort, and safety, right? So we want to make sure that everyone's kind of harmonious in how they they are within the city. Um, so under public decency and reasonableness, the importance, it's the importance of maintaining public decency, the sensibilities of reasonable individuals. Um, offenses against public decency and reasonable expectations are considered within the scope of that nuisance, right? So, um, and then, you know, we always want to make sure that people feel secure in their life and the use of their property um, within the city. Is there any questions on the definition?
So not so much on the definition, although I know it's. Uh, it's pretty vague uh, on what those things are and subject to interpretation. So my question. Is who makes the determination uh, of what a nuisance is? Um, and then. Uh, how is that communicated? And what are the criteria used? Um, I mean, I've got a whole host of questions here, but it really, I think, what's driving this is transparency on this entire process. So. Yeah, how, who makes the decision? And what are the criteria used so that if you have an exact same similar su- uh, situation? You don't get a very different determination is what I think we want to see.
Right, and that is actually, so I'm going to segue to the next slide because I think that will talk to that. If it doesn't let me know, and we can, we can further ensure that 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 question gets answered. So that's a really great question. Um, within our Covington codes, there is um, a lot of information within each one of our sections of our municipal code that talk about what nuisances are. Or what we rely on to determine if that is a nuisance. So we have codes created about. How many animals you can have, where those animals can be kept, right? We have things related to health and safety. So nuisance vehicles, how many can you have? What constitutes a nuisance vehicle? What do we do when there's a nuisance vehicle? And these are all throughout the code, um, particularly, I think, you know, Brian works a lot in um, Title Eight and eighteen. So eighteen is our zoning code. So this is where we talk about setbacks. Um, permitted uses, you know, are you running an illegal business out of your home? Does that business have the right permits? Um, did you get um, a deck permit for the deck you're building? So really, we go back to these various code sections that define what the criteria is for that action. And then you measure kind of back into that and 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 are you in violation of that, right? Did you put your, did you abide by setbacks? If not, then then you're in violation of the code. Um, so and the thought is, and and there's a lot of sections here. Um, the one that I will point out in is that Title Nine is really kind of more in the police's arena. So while something may come into Brian, he's going to work directly with our police department on those because those are really those. Public moral, safety, welfare, criminal code level actions, but pretty much these other sections are what we measure that against. Um. Is, does that get to your question a little bit?
Yeah, uh, I want to think about it a little more.
Okay, yeah.
Um, when you do make a determination, I'm forgetting.
Okay.
Zero report, you know, how does that get communicated back? Positive or negative.
Right.
And with the thought process in there saying, this is why we decided to do what we did.
Okay, hold on to that question because I'm hopeful. That is our whole goal tonight.
Yeah.
And if I didn't hit that, we're going to have a different conversation. Um, okay, so moving along. So part of the code compliance program too is that we have to triage what comes in, right? We we get um, a lot of complaints through C Click Fix through individual folks and. Um, we have to be able to take that information and triage it and how we respond to it and and how we get out to it. So. We kind of look at these in in these various priorities, low, moderate, um. And high, and under the low priority cases, these are really concerns that are more aesthetic and nu- nuisance related. They're probably the most of what we all visually see, right? Um, they don't pose a significant fire, life, safety issue. They're not a public health issue. They're not an environmental issue. Um, so our enforcement approach on those is to obviously reach out to that person, gain some awareness, um. Educate them and then work towards that voluntary compliance. So we're really a hands-on communicative um, process. We don't really go towards fines, and we really want to emphasize that corrective action. We want to get them across the finish line. We want them to understand. That you can't do this, and then hopefully that that violation doesn't happen again. Um, our moderate priority cases, so these are kind of a lesser level impact. They they don't have as high of safety concerns. Um, but they may involve issues such as a property maintenance or or um. Or something along those lines, and oftentimes, that could be something where we do a stop work order. So this might be things um. Such as maybe building something without a permit, right? We're going to go out and give you a stop work order. We're going to then work with you to make sure you come in and get that permit. To ensure what you're building is compliant. Um, so our enforcement approach on that is generally kind of that gradual ex- escalation of enforcement. We give you a stop work order, then we work with you to get you in the right path forward. Um, and then, you know, we hope that you comply. If you don't, then maybe there's a fine or there's some kind of pushing that we do on you to ensure that compliance. Um, but it's really still about collaboration and voluntary compliance at that level. Then we get into the higher priority, and these things are significant fire, life, safety, public health, or environmental concerns, and these are our top priorities. Um, these are things that pose a substantial risk to the public. So these things could include um, structural deficiencies, a dilapidated home. Um, it can include tree removal, someone legally removed a tree. It could be some type of action that occurred in a critical area. Some oil spill or someone clearing and grading along the creek. Um, our approachment for this is that becomes uh, immediate action and crucial, so we need to get out there quickly. Um, and again, that's stop work orders, red tape, prompt investigations. Um, and then because our codes have very clear distinctions about if you do. Something in a critical area, or if you build something without a permit, then we're again working you towards that um, rectification of that issue. And and oftentimes, when we're at that level, we're working with emergency services, fire and police. Sometimes we're working with state agencies like WDF, Fish and Wildlife, DNR. Could Wash Dot, could be a lot of folks really involved. Um. But I think the the key considerations around prioritization is that. The nature and the severity of the violation often determine the priority level. And we have to balance the need for enforcement with the goal of achieving compliance, right? So we often don't really go in there hard on a low priority level. We're going to work with you to ensure that we're getting you to compliance. We're educating you on that process. Versus something that's maybe a higher priority, we're going to work faster. We're going to include maybe a lot more people on that, um, raise it to a higher level. But having this ability for us to, and this is why it's important. I'll just say to have someone who is skilled and knowledgeable in code enforcement, because this is. One of those skills where you have to be able to discern, make some really clear discernments about. Um, the strategies that you're going to move forward with on how to get them to compliance. Um, something that we do is, you know, Brian's really good about if we're seeing a repeated issue coming up. Then maybe we take a pause and we say, okay, maybe there's a different way for us to approach this. Is there some education outreach? Is there some communication we need to enhance? So we're also checking and adjusting these priority levels as well, based on what we're seeing in the community, what he's seeing trending in the C Click Fix. Um, but our goal is always compliance. Um, and we also want to ensure a fair and consistent approach, right, to kind of what was said earlier. We want to make sure that we're fair and consistent. Um, generally, that fairness and consistent is in that outcome, but we might have to approach each person a little bit different because of their scenario to get them across that finish line. There's always the goal of compliance. Um, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this list. This list is really more for you as as the council. Um, that kind of gives you some greater examples in the low, moderate, and high priority, um, and kind of where those um, nuisances fall within that. Um, the one thing that I do want to say, um, and hopefully I communicate this correctly. Um, is that there's kind of an inverse relationship. Um, between kind of your low and your high priority. And, you know, sometimes it's hard to see when something's a high priority because it's not as visible, right? These lower priority issues are very often visible. They're clearly visible. We drive by them. We see them. They're top of mind. Um, and, you know. They they exist, but they are kind of in that lower of of priority when we're dealing with like a high priority. So, for example, um. You know, if if we've got someone with an aesthetic issue, a low priority, say, growing grass or junk vehicles. Um, and people are constantly complaining about that, but then we have a home maybe adjacent to that. That has those junk vehicles parked in a critical area, or they've cleared and graded that critical area. We're actually going to weigh that particular scenario higher than. The visible kind of lowered nuisance, right? We're still going to respond to both, but when we have to triage and working with those folks. Um, sometimes those non-seen ones have higher risk in the in the outcome. And all, and I'll just also say the lower ones are very hard sometimes to get voluntary compliance. Right? I think when someone's blatantly doing something, it's sometimes easier to come out and, hey, we're not supposed to do this. Versus sometimes when you have a lower priority issue, um, you know, oftentimes, they're going to, they push back a little bit more because. It's a private property issue sometimes to them.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Beth. So just a quick question then, I mean. Who rates the priority, right? I mean, because what's low priority, like for certain scenario, might be higher priority to. Somebody else in the neighborhood or whatnot, right? Yeah, and and I guess then the other question is. I mean, any code enforcement is doing that, kind of weighing the whole, the whole, um, like I said. Balancing which one would may have, maybe have a more negative health impact, but. How much time does it take? To clear a low priority and move in into compliance versus a high priority into compliance? How much public resource time on your end does it take? I I'm just curious about the.
It depends.
I'd like to know the answer to that, too. Every case is different. There's no apples to apples when we're doing this, kind of like criminal side. There's no apples to apples for anything that we do. Um, it it's dependent on the 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 type of complaint, the scale of complaint, the person that you're working with. Um, if there's more than one issue on it, there there's simply no way to basically say. Low complaints should be or or this amount of time compared to this amount of time.
I'm just curious how long it takes.
And the reality is sometimes the low are, and Selena already said this, harder to gain compliance because. We're not issuing stop work orders. So somebody's not like building a house, a builder, without a permit where you stop work them. They can't physically do anything until they come into compliance. They get their permit. Um, they do something that nature. The low compliance are, okay, I have a couple of nuisance vehicles, junk vehicles out of my yard. There's not a lot of incentive for them to really come in and take care of it unless you basically start. Finding them, doing something along those lines. But again, that's the difference of. There's not a lot of like safety issues in those low priority ones. Those generally go to your moderate and to your, to your, to your high. Um, so it hasn't been something that we have been doing, um, going to that, kind of that final step of of. Issuing a citation, issuing a notice and order, which we're going to get into here in the next couple of slides. Um, compared to just trying to really gain the voluntary correction for aesthetic reasons or or, you know, other type of nuisances that that we see.
Yeah, and I'll just kind of maybe you give one example of that. So Brian, Brian talked about the low priority, like the high priority, just looking at this list, so like, say, like, someone cuts a tree down, and they're supposed to get a major tree removal permit. Our tree ordinance is very clear. If you do this, then you're fined, right? So there's a direct path forward. So then that's the action we can move forward with, right? And then that now is rectified. They pay that fine, or we go after them for that fine. They pay that fine. That case is closed. That doesn't, that takes time. But maybe it's not as much in the loop of conversation voluntary compliance, that humanistic kind of approach that that we do for these low.
And it's very more clear.
Exactly.
The the lower you get, the less clear, which is kind of the first statement that was made. Um. When you're talking about the building codes and stuff, I mean, it's really black and white where we're going out saying, if you are building this. You need to have this. There's no, there's no question on, you know, do you need a permit? Do you not need a permit? It is very clear. Once you get to these low priority, these nuisance type stuff, uh, especially in Title Eight. Uh, it it is a little bit more of, it'll say if you have a significant amount of this or something, so you are out making a termination. My significant is going to be different than everybody else. At the table here, and really a lot different than whoever complained. And whoever was being complained on. I mean, it's, and there's really not much way around that because it's also hard to put quantitative. Values on garbage, like. If you have two hundred square feet of garbage, then you're this or a hundred square feet or fifty square feet. It just is basically simply say, you know, if you have a significant accumulation, a lot of times it's an accumulation. We're we're out, we're making a judgment call on what the cumulative actually is.
And driving towards that voluntary compliance in the meantime, right? We want to work with them as well because we want it cleaned up at the end of the day, right? And so, you know, we're, sometimes there's that soft approach that gets us there. Um, sometimes you have people that are immediate, or sometimes you learn like someone just doesn't have the resources or the ability to actually comply, right? And so we have to, Brian has to get a little bit curious with each one of these folks to say, like, again, that goes back to the problem solving and that efficiency. Um, okay, how can we, what resource can we get you? How do we get you across this finish line and then working with them on that? So. Yeah, it's not a, it's not a real straight answer. I'm sorry. It's a little ambiguous.
What I was thinking in my head, and you mentioned it a little bit.
Yeah.
To the point, you spend a lot of time on things that.
Well, yeah. Um, so here's a little bit of some, uh, did I miss this slide? Sorry. Okay, no. Um, here's some statistics, just as an FYI, um, for the council. Um, just this year, um, you know, we received over twelve hundred Covington Connects submittals. Um, these get distributed across various staff, so not everything that comes in is a code compliance issue. Those get distributed. Um, the three main departments are there, um, uh, are public, uh, public works, police, and then obviously code compliance. Um, this year, um, there was a hundred and twenty-nine code violation cases created. Um, and and that's, that's what gets created, right? There's one thing considered a complaint, but if there's no validity in that complaint. Then there's no case that is created, right? Someone might just not like something, or they are, you know, making a statement about something, but there's nothing in the code that says they're in violation of an act of something. Um, so that is the number of formal ones. And then, um. I just really want to point out, so of those hundred and twenty-nine, um, we've resolved a hundred and eleven of those, so November. So we've got about eighteen still open, I think, as of now. Brian could probably close a few more of those. So that's really less than fifteen percent left. Um, did I do the math right there of what we have left for this year, for this year?
That's why there's forty-five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we have cases all the way back to two thousand and three that have not made compliance. So that's why we're looking at a hundred and twenty-nine this year. But we also have.
They're being fined.
We also have thirty that are just from twenty twenty-two to two thousand and three. Then.
I want to know what that two thousand and three one is, so later we'll talk, because I think that's funny. Uh, but what's other code violations, like? Want to period that one out, is it like, you know? Guys, fence fell into the public right of way, and we're not, and they're not fixing it sort of a deal, or?
Uh, I mean, it could be all kinds of different things, uh, uh, nuisance vehicles, the number of vehicles. Uh. Like on Covington Connects, or there's several different uh, dropdowns that you can say, okay, well, this is parking in the street or or, you know. Um, other just kind of brings up a lot of what was on one of the previous slides. Um, the the priority level, oh.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep. Where it kind of lists out that, you know, a lot of, if it's not up there, it's probably.
So that could be, like, others could be someone cut down a tree. That they weren't, weren't supposed to.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, go back to that slide. Appreciate that. I was going to ask for, um, is there a annual report that's generated? Um, so it's, I'm glad to see we're tracking this. Um, if it isn't already on the website or someplace public facing, um, I think it needs to be. Um, I had a question on, um, so some of these that come into Covington Connects or elsewhere, as you said. Don't end up generating a case file. So how is that communicated to the person that? Generated that or put that forward, and what is the rationale behind it? So, again, I, I really want to make um, a documented trail that shows we are consistently. Transparently processing these so that if we ever get sued, we can say, this is why we're doing it over and over and over. So. Just curious, tell me a little more about how, what's the response? Because one of the things I hear from the public, we never hear anything back. And I'm not saying that's what happens. But if you hear five or ten times, they're not getting a response in the way that is connecting with that. So they need to hear, no, we didn't open a case file, and this is the reason. Doesn't violate the law. It didn't meet these standards. Um, so I guess what I'm saying is, we need to do a better job responding to those notes. So, anyway.
I I, I'll touch on that just for a second. That's a conversation we had maybe this summer, I I think, with all the people that use. Uh, C Click Fix, because a lot of times the responses were going as, uh, case is closed.
Yeah.
People are like.
Yes.
What is that?
Right.
And so the conversations we had is, is we have to give better closing responses so people know.
Yeah.
What happened now?
Yeah.
So that's a conversation we had that, I believe, has been getting quite a bit better.
Good.
So, um, I would be interested if you've heard those complaints in the last couple of months. I I haven't.
I just got one that said referred to the county, and I thought, okay, so will it continue to get followed up on, or is this Jennifer's problem to keep poking? Like, will the city follow that? And it wasn't a co-compliance, it was a sign down, but I I'm like. So what does that actually mean?
Yeah.
The city, we will, it would have been nice to see referred to the county will continue to follow up until resolved.
Right.
That would have been a better response.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, too, is, you know, with the resolved, what does that mean? Some of it may mean, no, what's further action? When I have that resolve, maybe it's pushed to enforcement, um, so.
Yeah, and I just want to give the impression that all our responses are going to be perfect.
No, I totally.
We've got just a couple of people working on, you know, twelve hundred of these.
And I think.
Plus all their other work.
Shanghai.
I think, uh, I don't.
What you're hearing is we recognize that this is in the process and that it gets better and that it's not perfect. But there are, how can we as a legislative body? Give you resources and support to make it better so that the public feels more satisfied and has more faith. That when they submit something, it will get handled in, like I said, it. Transparent, progressive, consistent way. Well, you know, technology is sometimes a double edged sword. Um, before we implemented our Covington Connects. We didn't get.
Of course.
Very many complaints.
Yeah.
But now it's so easy.
Yeah.
We get a lot, right? And so learning to handle that demand and respond appropriately has, like you said, been a process and something we're improving. Sorry.
Is, is, do you get like an actual spreadsheet report that you can generate off of C Click that shows all of them?
Yep, we, we can do that, and Krista and I are kind of the the admin for for C Click Fix. Um, and we do meet with them. Um, we've asked for. Uh. Some help from them, uh, and even getting things a little bit clearer. I mean, we can do some basic stuff. Uh, we even have asked that they provide like different stats for differing cities of our size, and we've had a little bit of pushback from that, but. Um, I know the last time that we met with them, she said that we far exceed most cities our size for the number of complaints that we receive.
Um.
Our residents are engaged.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is good saying.
Well, I mean, I mean. Yeah, and and I guess I'm also thinking too, like, like, kind of getting back to what Sean was saying, so if we are able, if we have visibility of. Like all the complaints, and we know we can funnel out the ones that are, you know, maybe probably.
Would you like to see the reports? Because we can send them to you, if that's what.
I would, I would be curious if if A isn't, isn't too much trouble on you all, and they're already generated. Because it also might help us go, what are people concerned about? And I mean, I can go in and see and see Click Fix myself and go down each one.
And I mean, I can go in and see, and see Click Fix myself and go down each one and open each, and that takes a while, right?
The reports are very easy for us to generate, the, the, the exact numbers for either the last month, the last quarter, the last year, the calendar year. I mean, it does let us query out, uh, uh, really the information that you'd wanna see, so that's.
It might help us set policy or make changes if that.
If council likes, um, we, we have an auto-generated report monthly, I can just push that out to you.
It gives us something to speak to as well, when we're talking to HOAs, and they're talking about complaints, and we could say, you know, we, really, no one's complaining about that.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So I do have maybe a couple of follow-ups though, we kinda got off track there.
Sorry.
So I can't really talk about everybody, I'm only one user on See Click Fix, on Covington Connects. Um, my standard response is, thank you for, for providing us this. We've created a code violation case, and we give them the exact case number. We give them our, our specific email, and we give them the phone number, the city's saying, if you wanna follow up. On your concern, this is how you do it, just give us the case number, here's how to get ahold of us. I think sometimes people don't look that far into it, they just see something's been closed, and they just say, okay, well, it's closed, instead of. Closed, but actually reading through what the, the comments that we've put in there, and so for everyone that code compliance. Uh, creates, we do that for each time.
The, the responses that are probably the ones you're referring to are more from our maintenance team.
Yeah, and, and not code.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I think that's a really good distinction, and, and not bad or, or diff, it's just different in the sense that Brian is a division that. His stuff goes onto a dashboard, you know, we could generate a file where maintenance and operations and police are just, they're moving through it, right? They're, they're going faster on that.
Um. And then, uh, there was one other.
Uh, and so you talked about how a no case file being opened is reported, and then how are you? Reporting the resolved cases, is that the same, similar?
So.
Or how do you update?
So with See Click Fix, uh, most time it comes in anonymous, so.
Okay.
Once we receive it, like, we don't necessarily have the ability to go back and talk to people, and See Click Fix isn't our site, so we don't have the ability just to go and say. We want it to work this way. So, some people choose to have their information. Shown, some don't, so now if we receive a complaint, we can't find the complaint, or we wanna respond. We, we don't even have the ability to, that's why, at least for code compliance, we say, this is the case number. This is our email, cause we have a specific code compliance email for people, this is a city hall number, if you have more questions, please let us know.
So along those lines, I could see a scenario where someone would report, they don't want their name listed. But they're heavily invested in it going forward, and they follow up with you to say, what's happening with that anonymous tip? Is that inquiry treated the exact same way as if a person put their name forward, saying, I want this resolved? And do they have? I, I think one of the things I'm looking at, if a person has a complaint and doesn't get resolved, do they have standing in court to say? Covington ignored what I was looking at, but if they didn't put their name down, I guess what I'm saying is, do we treat someone who's following up and no connection? As if they were the person reporting it?
Yeah, we don't treat anybody different for whether we know their name or we don't. If, if we receive a complaint, we do an investigation, based on whatever the investigation was, we take the, the appropriate action. Um, if they follow up to us, then we certainly will keep a dialogue going with them. Um, if they ask to, to be, uh, uh. Up in the loop, then we will do it as good as we can. Um, but it's certainly, we're not saying, well, we don't know who this is, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna go forward with that. Um, the last one was more of probably a legal question. Um, so maybe.
We can come back, okay. Oh, good discussion, um, so I'm gonna kind of continue moving through here, so the next slide we have here is on complaint types and investigations. And I wanna spend a little bit of time talking about complaints, just in general, and then, um, we'll, we'll, we'll dive more into investigations. So, when we look at our complaints, um, you know, Covington's a complaint-based program. So we get a complaint, we respond to a complaint, uh, most of those come in through Covington Connect, See Click Fix. So you saw those statistical data on the last one, on how many that come in. Well, there's kind of two other things that also happen in the background. And the other one is a city identified complaint, and I like to call that the see something, say something, right? As a staff employee, as an employee of the city, if I'm at a job site or driving around and I see something that is. Fire, life, safety, or concern, um, I'm gonna tell Brian about that, everyone on the staff operates in that kind of good faith of that, that. Um, see something, say something, so staff is also out there with kind of eyes, you know, but are we? I don't think that we're gonna knit down into that low priority as much, you know, into the nuisances. We're really looking at those kind of moderate to high priority risks, right? A tree was cut down, hey, Brian, I need your help to go do a stop work order, you know, things that are really about fire, life, safety. Um, and so, there's that, that was one of the complaints, and then there's the non-complaint based. That come in, and really the only one that falls in this category is signage. Um, in that Brian can go out and look at signage on the street and pull a signage or identify it as a nuisance. Because it doesn't meet the criteria in our sign code, right? Um, and the reason why signs really are the only one, is because no research is needed. It's very clear, is it in the right of way, is it in the right part of the right of way? And he doesn't have to do a lot of work to do, he doesn't have to do any evidence or research to determine if that's a nuisance. So, these are, you know, we're ha- heavy complaint-based, you, your staff is out there also looking at these, you know, at those moderate to high. And then the signage is something that we just do automatically on a, on a rotation.
Brian that can pull signs or Public Works.
Um, Jennifer and Jennifer are clean, what is her title? Thank you, Clean Team, she works with Brian really closely on that. Um, I don't know that our Public Works does it unless, kind of, they're not as involved in the code requirements of that, and so we wanna. We don't want signs to be pulled that are actually compliant, cause that actually causes more issues. And so we really have said, let us know about it, Brian will, will, will evaluate it, yeah, Brian or Jennifer. And then investigation, this is super high level, we're gonna dive into this more, but when we think about investigation, excuse me, it's, we receive a complaint. Brian then does, determines the code authority, is there a violation based on the adopted codes and policies within our municipal code, right? So, too many chickens, too many cars, you know, you name it, tree cut down. Deck in the wrong spot, that's very clear in our code, Brian can back into that, right, what those requirements are. Then we're gonna make contact, he's gonna spend some time reaching out to the person, um, that, that has the violation. And then we're gonna spend some time investing in, investigating and collecting evidence, and I, I just added this piece here, because I think it's important to also understand that. Sometimes Brian might get a complaint where my neighbor's doing something in their backyard, and I, you know, that, I think they're non-compliant. Well, Brian's initial is gonna reach out, if that person doesn't wanna comply or to connect with him. Can he even see it from the street? He doesn't have any rights to go onto someone's property, look over their fence, um, you know, that, that's all of our private, our private rights. And so, sometimes those particular cases could take longer, right? Cause now we're really having to like, reach out to that person and try to gain compliance, or, or get a visual. On what the situation is, and then, you know, within that investigation collect, um, we're, we're obviously working towards voluntary compliance. Um, I'll pause there for a second, is there any questions? Go ahead.
Fire, I mean, obviously if it's crime being committed, that's a whole nother level of somebody doing an investigation. If there's an immediate act, okay.
Yeah, and anything that's in those like high, moderate, it's like, fire, life, safety, police, those folks are at the table with us, fires at the table, police. Oftentimes, they actually will take it on, Brian's just more in the background facilitating, um, participating in that same. Like if we have a DNR situation, or official wildlife situation, staff's facilitating that and, and making sure that we're compliant as well with the state.
And this is related to the slide I think you're about to pop into. Um, are there timelines associated with the next steps?
Yes.
And if so, how do we ensure that we're adhering to them? Because as a council member, as a resident, I hear two thousand and three, that's unacceptable. And a lot of these, you know, going on, you can't see, like, ah, what keeps us engaged aggressively trying to get compliance? And then moving into enforcement in what a person would consider a reasonable amount of time.
Right, right.
Maybe good to go through the next couple of slides, cause we've got some examples that I think will be helpful.
Okay, yeah, I was just like, when I was looking at this one, you know, it would be great to see thirty days. Six weeks, whatever it is.
Right.
So I can like, oh, okay, so that we should be done with this whole situation within ninety days.
Yes, yeah. Um, so this is just a really quick code compliance process, um, I built in PowerPoint, it's, it's, if you, if you are used to working this. Um, PowerPoint's a little more difficult than Visio, but I, I did my best. Um, so I'm just gonna walk you through it really quick, I think what you are going to care about as the council is what you see there in purple, kind of those thickened purple lines. There's kind of a feedback loop that happens, um, so, and, uh, ultimately, the complaint is received. We do the initial investigation, um, if the complaint is not a violation, um, of the code or any department agency, or. Or it's just a complaint with no basis, then, then obviously we're gonna close that case, we'll respond and close that case. If the complaint description is a val, is valid, it's, it's got code attached to it that says, you know, you're in violation of this code. And or this policy, um, then, uh, we validate that. Um, and you're gonna move up to that outreach part, so you can kind of follow up, if, um. If not, then in there's, and we actually go out there, so we hear a complaint, cause there's things that happen, we hear a complaint, my neighbor's doing X. Brian goes out there, the neighbor was not doing X, and this happens a lot. I've actually had people call me who, who have started a code compliant case against their neighbor. Only to find out it's not the original neighbor that they thought was living in the home, and then they tried to rescind their code compliance action. But by then, we already knew that that neighbor was non-compliant, was they were building a deck. And so then they had to come into compliance, and it actually resulted in that neighbor taking their deck out because it was so uncompliant. But that neighbor, the person who made the call, was constantly like, I take it back, I take it back, I take it back, I thought they were somebody else. Okay, so I'm just letting you know, there's, uh, we, so we go out and we investigate, and if Brian, if the, if it's not valid, then we're gonna close the case. Okay, if it is valid, then we start this process of outreach. If there's no response, right? And by outreach, we generally will do a letter, an email, um, we used to knock on the door, I'm gonna tell you, we're not doing that anymore. Right, that is not a safe scenario, there's lots of, um, examples, even in King County where officer or code compliance officers have been shot. And or attacked, and so Brian is really, um.
As much as we can, we try to make other contact first.
Right.
And then, once we make that contact, it's a little bit easier for us to gauge of, okay, this is kind of a safe, a safe situation. Um, to go off, if it's not, then.
We'll take the officer, but we can, yeah, but that can't be our norm, that, that just takes too much of, of our officer's time. Um, if there's no response, then obviously we're gonna kind of do a little bit more outreach, um, send them that letter. And give them a really strong duration of time for them to respond to us, you've got thirty days. And then if they don't, you can kind of follow, contact made, no, case remains open, we go into a notice of action, and we'll talk about those notice of violations. The, the loop that I think is what you're concerned about as far as time is that we get a response, they, they're working with us. Um, Brian does give a timeline, and they're not necessarily always the same for everything, right? Because he's gonna go out and assess and say, you've got junk or garbage on your lawn. It could be someone who doesn't have anybody in their family that can come and help them, we've gotta get them resources through King County. It might be a ninety day or a hundred and eighty day, right? It could be another scenario where someone's like, you know what, I got someone, I can get a dump truck tomorrow, I'll be out of there, and Brian will say, great, I'm gonna give you thirty days to do that, right? So that's where that conversation really matters, to kind of assess or discern where people are, kind of meet them where they're at in that scenario. So then that time period comes up, Brian tracks this, we have a dashboard, he goes out and asks, does that violation still exist? No, we close that case, if that violation exists still, we say it's yes, and we continue to work with them. Then he gives them another duration of time, and then we kind of go back through that, are they responding? And some people are like, they continue to respond very slowly, they're working on it, they're getting it done, they're slowly resolving the issue piece by piece. Because there's also a cost to a lot of this stuff, when people are met with a violation, and some people financially can't afford to just take care of it. So they might be trying to do it over time as money comes in, or resources become available to them. And so we just kind of stay in that loop, and as long as they're working towards compliance, which is what we want, we're gonna work with them with, with them within that loop.
A lot of those longer compliant issues are, we're, we're, um, enforcing against the property owner, but it's not the property owner.
It could be a renter.
And those are much, much more difficult to bring into compliance.
Or bank owned.
Yeah.
Like, like the one we just had recently, right? We've had a couple of them, that you guys have actually gone out and worked with them, and it's taken time, but.
Especially if it's like a squatter scenario, cause you really have to involve the courts at that point. Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's kind of that loop with, with ultimately them getting to that, does a violation still exist? No, then we close that case. Um, if they stop responding to us, then we're gonna move into, or they've stopped correcting that action. Then we're gonna ru- ru- um, roll into that administrative notice of order, um, a civil violation, and that's where we start talking about fines. So I'm gonna go into that here in a second, but I wanna pause if there's any questions on this map, if this is helpful. I know, I'm trying to speed it up here. Um, so these are the other code compliance, um, processes that we have. The one there on the left is the administrative notice of order and correction of civil violation. So this is really what we roll into, um, most of the time, when, um, someone is not compliant, or they had, or they failed. And this is where we talk about, um, having corrective action, giving deadlines, and each day that they are not compliant, they are, um. They're getting fined, so they're accruing fines. Um, with the intent that that might be enough for, to push them to comply, because they're gaining all these fines. Um, if at the end of the day, we're still not getting voluntary compliance, cause, because while those fines are accruing, Brian is still doing that cycle of outreach. And communication, and, and really trying to get them to that compliance. If it just gets to the point where, where it's not happening, then that's where we involve Mark, and it becomes more of a civil action, and that's where we're going to court. That, that's where it costs, there's a cost involved to that as well. Um, that, that's our main tool that we use, um. You know, the, the state law does allow us to write code compliance tickets, like an officer could write a, a traffic violation. Um, but again, you know, there's not a lot out there where that has been a positive experience in other cities. They're like, there's not a lot of teeth in that either, um, and that's ultimately where, you know, now you're going to municipal court, you're going before a judge. Um, it does cost us money and time to go through that, so that's not something we really use. Um, abatement also is another one, um, that it's, it's there. But it's not really something that we use, because the, the state law is a little ambiguous about it. So we don't have a lot of standing in the state of Washington when it goes into abatement, you have to be very clear about that. And, um, that's, that's not something that we're generally going into, and then the liens. Those are an option, but those generally only become an option if you want to put a lien on someone's property for the fees that they've incurred. Knowing that if they go to sell their home, right, that that's when you're seeing that lien. Um, that is a big legal and financial resource cost to file and collect those, and oftentimes you don't even get them at the end of the day. Um, but where these are kind of crosscutting, um, is, is that, um. There are tools that we have out there, but the one that we're finding is the most beneficial to us is that notice, administrative notice. Civil violation, and then pushing people to voluntary compliance, we want them to. So here's one example, I think you're all familiar with this. Um, we'll roll through really quick. So this is, uh, an example of car parking, um, so we received the complaint. And, um, you know, there's too many cars parked on this property, Brian then goes and says, well, what does the code say about parking on property? Um, under our municipal code there, kind of that long, that long statement. Um, at the end of the day, that statement also ultimately says, if you've got twelve thousand five hundred square feet or less, um, you can have six. Vehicles, if you've got more than twelve thousand five hundred, you can have eight vehicles on that property. And if you've got an established accessory dwelling unit, you get one more, right? So in order for that property to be compliant under the adopted codes, they could have eight cars parked there, that, that is compliance. So then Brian learned, you know, we determine what the code authority is, we make that contact, we investigate and collect evidence. And, um, that gets back to kind of that feedback loop, hey, you need to remove these cars, hey, how, when is this going to happen? Working with that property owner to ensure that occurs, and then, um, obviously working towards that voluntary compliance. Um, but it is a very collaborative effort that Brian and, and code enforcement or code compliance takes. And sometimes, you know, folks don't know where to put a car, or they don't know how to get rid of it. Um, you know, so then we're again helping them kind of navigate systems or processes for that. Um, and so then, once that occurs, Brian goes back out there, and he'll see, okay, well, they're compliant, we can close that case.
Okay, so. Mm-hmm, I'm saying what everybody's thinking, because they get into compliance, and then two weeks later, they're not, right?
Yes.
So I guess, I guess the question is too, I mean, if, if somebody's a repeat offender, there really isn't anything in our code that says. After three infractions of the same thing, you, I mean, you know the law, you know what you're supposed to do, it's not a matter of not knowing, we've worked with you before. We've never really gone to that next step, or what is that? Or what do we need to do? Or what could we do?
Yeah, and um, that that's actually one of our discussion questions. We knew that that would be something that we anticipated. That's something the council would want, want us to look at. So the two questions we have here, and we can start with number two, is should the city evaluate repeated violations differently? So we did a little bit of code um evaluations of other cities and they actually have like a repeat um, a chronic nuisance provision. So they've added a section to their code that talks about chronic nuisances. And basically what it does in in those few cities we've looked at is it allows us to skip that like volunteer, like maybe we go through one cycle of voluntary compliance and then we're moving into a a more civil enforcement action.
Skip a lot of stuff.
Yeah, like let's him, let's him kind of go directly. And we can build out what works best for us. But but what it does is is we're accepting that, okay, in a chronic scenario, we still want you to voluntary comply. But maybe we're a little bit um shorter in that duration of time that we give you, or we're a little bit quicker to get to um to that uh notice of action, right? Still working towards compliance, but now there's um opportunity for him to do something different. And it does, you know, that long process diagram, it could kind of streamline some of that.
And we we can do it under the adopted regulations right now. It's just a lot cleaner if we were to actually have that in the code.
Right.
Cause it's a little bit more clear cut. Um, just having it. So that's something that that we certainly could do. Um, this kind of situation, um, we certainly will just, moving forward with or without it, still kind of probably not given as as much of the the um, the time that that normally happens at this point, so.
And and I think too, you know, we're having that in the code, or maybe that's something we explore at the council as a, as something we'd like to do in our code. Um, there's also that balance too of what's that duration of time that someone is within a chronic nuisance, right? I think in this particular scenario, they're on a corner, they're very visible, right? And so we're seeing that more, but that's the same issue is probably occurring somewhere else, right? We just haven't received a complaint about it. And so.
Let me just for sake of time, is that something council would like us to pursue? What's that? The the offenders?
Yeah.
Chronic.
I don't know. Say it since we're running out of time.
Yeah.
Uh, would council like to have, well, no, we've had a lot of great. So I feel that these are gonna be a lot of in-depth conversations. Is this something that we wanna bring back to answer these questions at a future council meeting or put it on our summit agenda?
I was wondering about summit, might be a good idea.
Is there a time at summit? I mean.
I probably at this point have the longest agenda.
Well, what about a second works?
So we originally had this on the summit, but then we thought, let's bring it back sooner.
So what do we have on our, I didn't interrupt, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So what do we have as far as a study session in January? Cause I know we're tied up in December. And I believe the.
And would you really want that study such just to focus on these two questions really? Or what? What's different from tonight? What do we want to see at that?
Yeah, possibly. I'm gonna send you a letter on some of the things I think should be included. And it's kind of what we've already talked about. Um, I think at a minimum, providing us with um where we can tighten the code to reduce some of that uncertainty. You know, I I, you know, I want to look at those low priorities and go, okay, let's make it clear.
Yeah, right.
And so, um, and then a suggestion from the process, you know, I I'll put this in writing, but you know, I know there's no standard typical case, but we can track how long they take. And then we can start getting there to say, on average, it takes six months. If they start stretching into nine, ten, twelve, eighteen, they're getting into that one or two or three percent. Then we need to start really pushing on.
Let's leave it for, I'll leave it up to staff to see which meeting in January to bring this back. And so we can continue these.
Is it important it's it's January? What if it goes in February?
Well, if it goes in February, is, I don't know what's on the study session.
You're leaving it to us to.
I'm leaving it to you to bring it back so we can have a further in-depth discussion on this, cause we can't get this done in a couple of.
Yeah.
Right. And so, so just so I'm clear on kind of what we're bringing back is really these two questions and maybe that process.
Or I would even maybe suggest emailing them to us and maybe we can start giving.
Yeah, I think if you, if you send that to me, we'll go through.
Or however you want it. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay, cool. All right. Is there consensus with council to do that?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Selena and Brian, uh, thank you very much for bringing this forward to us. Um, cause this is something that we don't wanna rush and we wanna get this.
Right, it's been very enlightening.
Yep.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. With that, the study session is over and we will move into our council meeting shortly.